I think we are. I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Mercer Island School District, regular meeting of the Mercer Island School District Board of Directors and our, with our special guests, the Mercer Island City Council members. So this is a great opportunity that we have twice a year to get together with our city council partners and our groups, we have our city council partnership group have gotten together and spoken about topics that we will then hear about tonight and we have a great agenda, a very substantive agenda, and Bruce and I have spoken and it looks like if we devote 30 minutes each to each topic, we'll have just about the right amount of time.
Okay, so do we need to do a vote call at this point? Okay, so let's do a city council vote call.
Councilmember Debbie Burtland?
Here.
Councilmember Jane Braun?
Here.
Councilmember Mike Zero?
Here.
Councilmember Joel Wachs?
Councilmember Benson Wong?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Dan Grous?
Here.
Mayor Bruce Bassett?
Here.
Thank you very much.
Great. So first on the agenda is youth and family services needs assessment and future funding issues, and I'm going to ask Dr. Plano to tee that up for us.
Well, I'm going to share that with the deputy city manager. We're going to hear from staff. Cynthia Goodwin will share the needs assessment and what's revealed from that, and potentially we might just engage some conversation about what next steps might be related to funding.
Absolutely. Good evening, members of the council. The school board, is this good? Can we hear okay? Is it on?
Yes.
Yep, good, thank you. So I want to report back on something that we began, a process we began last fall. After we finished our budget with the YFS department, we had hit that point in funding where our expenses were not as high as our revenues, and we had projected this, but it was unclear when that would happen. So we find ourselves in a position of needing to take a look at either increasing revenues to the department or making some decisions around what services we do. So as part of that, I want to just say, we're funded through this biennium, and we're funded through 2016, and in 2017, there's a projected deficit. And so as part of that, we're taking a look at how do we, how do we think about service decisions in the future. So just to kind of short recap, our projected fund deficit, a few things contributed to this. One was a thrift shop sales plateaued. We'd had several great years of growth. We changed a lot of the business model. It leveled off significantly due to a huge change in how our volunteer corps was managed. We had people who'd been there 30, 40 years, and really gave 20 or 30 hours a week, and it's really shifted to, you know, the volunteers of today that maybe do a shift. It's very different than the people that came in at the beginning of thrift shop. General fund support, that was curtailed and kind of cut back gradually over the years as the thrift shop did well. The general fund subsidy was decreased, and it only made sense to do that. We had a, we had a great fund balance and we're doing well, and so that was, that was cut back from the previous amount of $4.65 gradually down to $200,000. That was part of our revenue picture. And then the school funding. The school district faced cuts like all of us did, and they had to make choices themselves and really went primarily with education, which is their core mission. So we used to have half of the councils paid for, and it went down to $60,000, and that was understandable. And then coming online in September 2006, as you know, is the fourth elementary school council. So this is really some of the, some of what's going on in the background of why we're, why we're doing these assessments and looking at services and core mission. So our whole goal of doing this assessment was to take a look and examine what are our, what are our core services, and how do we look at what are mission critical? And when we say mission critical, for us, that's looking at senior citizens, children, the chronically or actively mentally ill, and then people who are living in poverty on the island and low-income people and services to that. And then we look at the whole cadre of services that are assistance and support. Those probably follow out next. When we went and asked questions about that, we were looking at what are those services, and are there services that could play, that could supplement these on the island? And we're hoping that this assessment would give us a snapshot of what are existing, what are we doing out there, and do we have the service configuration that matches our community at this time. So we looked at two areas. We looked at community-based services, which are the emergency family assistance, employment assistance, youth diversion, senior services, prevention, and then the youth development program, so the voice in the SVP. I want to just talk a bit about how we did this. We joined with the Burke Consultants, and they're a Seattle consulting firm. They do a lot of community assessments with many communities in the area, and we gave them, we gave them what we were being faced with, what was coming up, where we were in our funding picture, and we said, we want some conversations with our community about if we are looking at fund, at funding or lack thereof, how would we make that decision? So, would you help us put something together? And they, they decided on a methodology because they do a lot of community needs assessment, and they divided, we divided the work. They met with all of our school partners, Dr. Plano and all of his staff, and I met and somebody from YFS met with four focus groups. So Burke did three individual interviews in seven focus groups. The groups that they took a look at, they divided who they would speak with by what they did. So all of the direct service providers in the school, the, all of the elementary school principals together, the high school counselors, middle school counselors, administrations for each schools, and then they met with district administrators and spoke with Dr. Plano on the phone, and spoke with the city manager, Noel, on the phone. For the community-based services, we met with the professionals in the community that make the majority of non-school-based referrals to our services. So we met with medical providers, we met with the faith community, met parent, coaches and counselors on the island, and then the Youth and Family Services Advisory Board. And that, they're really the eyes and ears of our community, so as we go forward, they are always asked for feedback and their thoughts on things. It was fairly quick. It was done between January and March, and we had originally been working with a March 31st deadline because we thought if we didn't have funding through 2016, Dr. Plano let us know that he would need to know that prior to making his budget this year. So we were on a pretty short timeframe, and we stayed with that even though we realized we had funding through the end of the biennium. The methodology for doing it was actually, it was very helpful to have their input in this because they came up with a set of questions on how all of the interviews would be conducted in a way such that we, everybody heard the same information and was asked the same questions. And that really helped us and helped Burke in putting together the feedback that they found. But everybody was asked after they were informed of what's our mission, what's our vision for community, for the department, what services are valued the most by them, and their work with children in the schools, or their work in children if they're a medical provider or parenting coach, what services should be maintained, what services could be discontinued, are there other resources on the island that could pick up these needs if some services were cut, and what were those services? Do they see barriers in accessing services? Do they see emerging trends, something that they see coming down the line that we don't really address right now? And then are there any other communities, any other thoughts or concerns that they have for our kids or the families that they serve? So this is methodology, this is what we went in with, went in with in each of these groups, and then they, they, Burke took all that information and developed the report that you have. Okay, that's where all the information came from. And in the report, you'll see a section on key findings, and I'd kind of like to go over those because they, Burke brought up, reported back by each of the interview groups, and each interview group gave all of their thoughts on what they thought should be continued, what they'd like to see increased, and really answered those questions thoroughly. But these were the findings that they felt were the most important and the most, that echoed the loudest, and they're working with the groups. And the primary one is that everyone speaks, that their, really the main concern is that they want youth to develop into well-adjusted and successful adults, and that was really clear, and it's echoed by everybody on the island. We have a very, you know, real child-focused and family-focused island, so that was the main concern. Really expressed a lack of a clear other entity that would be able to provide services if YFS wasn't here, and that they're faced with a lot of cuts. They did mention some outside providers off island, talked about barriers for that, especially for services where the kids are. Would kids go to someplace that wasn't on the island? I think the whole reason we began the school program is that kids access services where they are, and they're in school, and that's where their relationships are with trusted people, so having counselors next to them, next to them really encourages kids and makes it easy for them to access services. I think the other concern, especially for medical providers, was for some of the medical providers and counselors on the island, the services could be expensive, and if you enter into the medical care system for help, especially counseling help, you are usually a diagnosed. And we stay away from diagnosing partly because a lot of the things that our kids face are developmental, and there's a lot, a lot of discussion around whether it's even ethical to diagnose somebody under 18, so those are, those are probably the concerns in that. Third one was stigma, and it's a primary bear for parents and children accessing services. That is, that's uniform in communities like ours. I just want to say that while you have a highly achieving community and kids that do well, families that do well, it's hard to ask for help. It's harder. It's not part of your makeup. And this, we really heard from faith and medical, we heard this from everybody, and I think it's just that all of us who work with families can feel that, and I'm sure everybody here can. All of our groups spoke about anxiety increasing among youth, and that they want to see more services that promote social, emotional health, and I just want you to kind of hold on to that one because there is some, anyway, they have youth reports, it's evidence that it's not increasing, and it's at least state-level. So listen to the data because data is a good snapshot of who we are, and I do want to preface it that when you're, when you're, the providers that answer the questions, you're getting kids come to you that are anxious, and that's why they're coming to you, so you may not see the whole spread. So make sure that you listen to data like we should with everything, and just keep that in good context. I think if we really, we'll look further into this so we can see trends, we'll look at the past for healthy use surveys so we can see if there's any going up, but we deal with that anyway. And having said that, I also just want to say that it is probably higher among elementary school kids. We do see a higher rate of that in performance anxiety than when we have people who come from other districts. That's one thing they identify, and that we hear from teachers that they identify that too, so both of those things, keep them, keep those in mind. The issue of confidentiality does arise sometime, and this was specifically asked for, and this is usually thought when there are transitions or new administrators, that this is because it's a hybrid. We are a mental health provider in a school, there's always going to be issues around this, so it takes a while to work those things out. And we really pointed that demand for services is high, particularly at the middle and high school level, and that this, this staff really expressed a request for enhanced services that would include parent engagement, and this is something that's been on our radar for a while. So these were the findings. There were many findings in each of the focus groups, so as a department, we made up a matrix that really outlined, there were nine requests for increase in services, there were four new services or expanded services they'd like us to focus on, and then we had 13 issues or concerns that came up for them, and those were things like, issues were things like time barrier for youth, over-involved parenting as related to interference with school discipline, youth alcohol issues, bullying, just brought up issues of concern to us and things that make sometimes our work difficult. An expanded focus were things like transportation for seniors came up, not necessarily school, but transportation for seniors, influence of marijuana legalization on youth substance abuse. So those are just some examples of what they all came up with. So we have a matrix, that's what we're going to look at. So I just want to talk a minute about the implications for service. So when we originally did this, it was, you know, really what is our core service, core services, and if we had to do something, what would be mission critical? And I told you, for us, it's really the most valuable, it's the most vulnerable people that we work with. We will take this data, and we will look at, can we adjust the provision of what we're doing? What are the most important services right now? We will shape conversations with school staff because a lot of things that were brought up, we can adjust now, they're budget neutral. Should we take a look at how we're doing things and go forward and adjust what we're doing, would that make sense? Would kids be served better? So we'll use it in that way. We'll begin this coming academic year, make a list of who we can have conversations with, and actually, some of the conversations from those, conversations with Burke Consultants have kept going. So, I mean, we'll provide this whole report to school teams. You're getting it, and we'll make sure that everybody else does too, because really, this is information we should all share and have because basically, they're really all of our kids. I think the last thing as far as this goes is...
Cindy, I'm sorry, can you just, going back to the, can you explain what adjusts the provision of community-based services where possible?
Thank you. Yeah, it does. Thank you. So we have community-based services and we have school-based services, and they actually work in conjunction a lot. So you have a lot of the counselors at the high school will make referrals, and they always make, just for information, they make three referrals. Well, YFS, community-based is one of them, but we also give other referrals so parents feel more comfortable going elsewhere. But we do adjust our services at community-based to make sure that they're dealing with what's going to come out of the school and what we're going to get referrals for. But some of the, one thing that was brought up to us is the wraparound service model. I'm going to just highlight this because it is important, it's going to be an important discussion in the future. In every community, you have really high kids who take up a lot of need, and it's because maybe they have, they've been referred to service but they don't go. They don't have parents that are getting them there, and they have a lot of needs. And there's a model where you can have a type of case manager, work with those kids, develop the relationship, when they've been resistant to other professionals, and you try to find some way to hook and connect them to the community, whether it's a job that they want, whether they have not been able to pursue an interest. Multiple ways that you can connect kids and start joining with them. Should we consider doing something like that? The caveat of doing something like that is that you also have to have the maintenance and the infrastructure of all the other services because they're eventually really going to need the counseling and the drug and alcohol, which is what brought them in there in the first place. But can we use our community-based services in a different, in a different way? And I'm using this as an example because we started this conversation, and we started looking at using an intern to make connections for doing this kind of model. So, and this was spurred on by this discussion, so how can we adjust our community-based services so they really supplement and enhance what we do in the schools? Thank you for asking. To jump over that really quickly. So that's, that's how we do it. We'll, we'll start this soon. It's really, this process has been great. I think probably one of the things that you really notice is it's not like it said, cut this service out, I mean, there was a lot of, we just want more. Yes, exactly, and so, yeah, yeah, and that there was really no clear way to cut. It does leave us with, if we're forced to cut, we will go look at this report and say, how do you, how do you make a hierarchy of needs? How do you keep the most vulnerable safe? And then after that, how do you take a look at what people want and have in place, and then we can engage people in that discussion, and you can guess the, the things you have to keep in place. We keep a core of community-based and we keep a core of school, and we probably figure out how to reduce those in each of those respective areas, but we'd go down that, go down that, go down that road if we need to. And then the last, just the last slide is just the implications for funding, and I know that you're all aware of this because these have come up before, and I think that will be part of your discussions moving forward, but you could reduce YFS fundings, you could increase the school district financial support, you know, if McCleary funds come back available, could those be added in over years? That's a question. Increase general fund support, and that, there's just, with that, it means it might result in service level elsewhere. The city itself will have about a million-dollar deficit going into, I believe it's 2017, so if you up what's available for YFS, it's just natural that you have to make decisions elsewhere.
Why is it so definitive that it will result in service level? I like the way you brief it.
I think I said, I'm sorry.
Why is it so definitive that it will result in service level if we take it from the general fund?
Why, didn't I say will? Was that, was that your question? I'm sorry, that's the question.
Well, I, I, I just like to point out that what the slide says is that it will result in service level reduction, and that's not necessarily at, at all true.
It would result. Okay, then it may not be. I think when I was speaking with Chip, and Chip is here to ask any kind of questions, I think we're assuming that if we take additional funds to support YFS, that that would make other choices that the city would have to make, that funds wouldn't be available elsewhere. And I'll leave that up to Chip and other people to address, but when we discuss it, we, we talked about the trade-off. And then the other opportunity that people can, I'm sure that's been discussed and that we discuss further is perhaps a levy lift to Mercer Island voters in 2016. I think, you know, those are things that I'm, we're available for questions, as is Chip. I do want to say that, and you know, Dr. Plano has pointed this out, and I know, know has too, these are all our kids, and so whatever we decide, let's decide together and support each other in what direction we take, because we're fortunate in that respect, and we have incredible support from anybody who speaks about your kids and all parents, so it's a good platform. Chip, is there anything else that you want to add, or do you have, can we answer any questions for you about the assessment, about the process that we went through with it?
I have a question on, Cindy, the fourth bill, the levy lift to Mercer Island voters. Inferring that that means a city-based levy, okay, because there is an implication that is happening as we speak with the special session and how they're planning to increase funding for schools. And there are two bills that were heard today from the Senate that would limit both the school district or another agency from allowing those funds to be used for public education because it's the state's paramount duty. So that is something that's unknown. We don't know if, what the result of this, this special session would yield.
Yeah, well, a couple of questions. One comment, you know, there's, as far as trying to find other sources of funding, have you started looking at what Dow Constantine is sort of pushing as his best start for kids? Is that a potential source for additional funds if this levy passes?
Yeah, I just, I think that was the one that was in the paper yesterday. I don't know. We'll, we will explore every source that comes available, so we'll continue to follow that. I'm honestly not sure what that would entail, if we follow that if it is.
And I had another funding question. And so as far as, you know, you mentioned that because when the recession hit, the school district cut their contribution from 50% of, for the counselors to $60,000 to set them out. With the economy improving, I mean, obviously, the school district is looking at that again to see whether or not there's a possibility. I don't know what the status is.
That's a great question, Councilmember Wong, because it plays into the larger issue of can the district look to its local effort? And I'll use that broadly. The local effort could be local effort by a city or local effort by a levy that the board has authority to issue that may diminish and, and limit our ability to provide services that are deemed essential. So for example, counselors in elementary schools would be part of a prototypical staffing model for all schools in the state. So in the way that we presently use elementary counselors, they're often used as elementary school counselors for a general behavior intervention that is not of the mental health nature, and those are really supplanting the services that the state's paramount duty is to supply enough staff and enough resources to fund basic education. We might be able to at some future if, because the McCleary decision is all about that. It's all about the state not meeting its paramount duty to fund schools. We might have a situation where the city would provide mental health counselors specifically for those mental health purposes that go beyond the scope of, of public education or what the state would deem as part of basic education, and potentially, those could be funded by the city. But the full-time counselor then would be someone that we would hire, that the state would provide additional funds for. So it's sort of a, we've got a bunch of concentric circles that are all overlapping, and we won't know the outcome for potentially weeks or potentially years if, if some of the agreements are made in Olympia that further push the issue down the road and have a multi-year solution, because that's very likely to occur as well.
Can you explain that, Carrie? So the counselors that are, the Youth and Family Services counselors now, are they the only counselors in the elementary schools?
Yes.
So you're saying that it's possible that at least part of their function could not be paid for by this?
That's right.
The city or by the school district?
Correct, by local effort.
By local effort. So then effectively, if the school district is going to continue, it'd have to take some of its monies from the state to pay for that?
Correct, if that's...
So then if, so then, so I, and I know this is hard to figure out without thinking about for a long time, but of our existing counselors, what percentage would you say of their work is?
That's a great question. There is, I think, more often than not, and I won't put a percentage on that, but more often than not, they're not engaged in mental health work, they're engaged in all of the preceding or antecedent behaviors that a typical developing six-year-old, eight-year-old playground issues children get involved in. So more often than not, their time is spent doing that. However, because we have counselors in schools who also provide therapy or services to parents, they're also providing those mental health services when parents are coming in. And I would venture to say that a good portion of that time may be of the mental health service.
Can I just add a little to that? I think you're right about that. I think we consider it milieu therapy, that anything you do around the life of the child is adding to their, to their positive mental health, so that's a lot of helping them to, the social, emotional development when you're on the playground with them and helping them to interact appropriately, and when you're, you're mediating or facilitating interactions and teaching them to, that you're enhancing their mental health and their ability to function well in a school, so that's a lot of it. But the actual therapy items of mental health are probably small, in particular with little kids, because insight-oriented therapy is not what's working for their mental health. You really need to be out there and working with the milieu in which they work, and work with the teachers and parents, which are really have the greatest impact on their mental health, not a half hour of counseling. It's, it's great, in particular when you have kids in distress, but it's all the other aspects of working with them that are going to be mental health for them.
But it sounds like until the legislature does its thing, we're set for this biennium.
Yeah.
And hopefully by the end of this biennium, we'll be able to get more guidance from the state on how much we can continue funding with local, with local monies, and then it's going to be a lot easier to, or more difficult depending how it comes out to make, to make decisions on what we do next.
There will be, there will be new problems that will be challenged with as we learn more.
I just have a quick question. The $60,000 that the school district contributes, what, that's a percentage of what? Or what's that percentage of, of the total?
Do you remember the percentage? Because of the tolls.
Because it used to be 50%, and then, and now what is it?
50% of the six counselors. It's not tied to anything to my knowledge.
I don't remember with the previous city manager who's now retired, I don't recall how 60 was arrived at. I don't remember where that number came from, but it, it wasn't a percentage that would then increase over time, it was a fixed number, but I don't recall how we arrived at 60.
I am interested in presenting.
Are you asking what the total is?
509,000, in 2015, 509,000 is the total cost for school counseling services, so 60K is more than 10%.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so stay tuned.
Let me just, I guess, Carrie, you know, going into this, there was this significant question... question of the school counseling need versus the mental health counseling need. And I just, I guess, I don't feel like I've really heard yet what your desire is going forward in terms of the structure of this, and whether you're at a point where you have a recommendation for that structure within the schools. And I don't want to put you on the spot if you're not there yet, but I'm curious if you are. Because I feel like we've kind of heard, there's a need, it's big, it's, there's no spot where we don't have a need, but I'm not sure how it meshes together with that school counselor need.
So at the secondary levels, beginning at grade six, we do have school-based counselors that are paid for out of levy or state effort. And we have mental health counselors at the secondary schools, beginning at grade six. We would continue, I believe that this community will benefit, our students will benefit from lended service, where they can receive academic counseling. And often, the academic counseling may start out as, I'm having difficulty in class, that may be rooted in some emotional anxiety-related, depression-related situation that gets handed off, in some cases, to a youth and family services counselor. Or, in some cases, is contracted out. If it's a school district special education matter, we'll go find a provider to be able to provide those specific mental health services that may be needed. Or parents will then choose to find a private therapist to work with the student. As I look at the horizon, I see a more complex world for teenagers. I see more issues around competition, and anxiety, and depression, that often manifest themselves in unhealthy behaviors, like drugs, or alcohol, or other unsafe actions. I don't see that decreasing. So I see us continuing to look for service as the issues, the social-emotional issues become more complex, in a school that is actually growing. We're actually adding more students to the high school. So we are growing in numbers, growing in complexity, and I see a need for continuation of academic counseling and some mental health or drug intervention, intervention specialists of which we have through Youth and Family Services as well. Because those are, that is a need that is absolutely demonstrable in our school, in our community.
Chip, I see you're, are you thinking to give us a brief sort of how to fund this discussion? Sure.
It's in the agenda bill, but just real quickly. So legally or technically, the budget isn't balanced for YFS for the biennium. However, we have the funding to balance it for 15, 16. That comes from the bank capacity, there's a chunk of money, we haven't decided how to use it yet. And then we have some 2014 general fund surplus. Those taken together can take care of the almost $200,000 projected deficit at the end of 16. So that's the good news. We can buy ourselves time through the biennium, not a problem. I'll tee up decisions for you on that funding on June 1st, when we talk about how to use the general fund surplus from last year.
You may not be ready for this, but are you able to give us just a quick voter-approved summary of what that would look like? So the fourth bill, the levy lift to Mercer Island voters. And I know Seattle, for instance, has the, what they call a debt, I think.
In education.
Yeah. And I assume this is along the same lines as that.
Well, it's not, this is part of a broader conversation we'll have at the mini-planning session. But the general fund itself, as it projected, it's projected, million-dollar deficit in round numbers in 17. And so it would be looking potentially at taking that deficit, and that would get refined as we get closer to that point in time, get refined next year, and you would add the YFS deficit on top of that. And you take that combined request to the voters through a levied levit, which is a simple majority vote. You can choose a permanent levy. I prefer the six-year variety, because you can set the measure of inflation at something more appropriate than 1%. And also, you know, kind of puts the thumb on me to kind of sharpen a pencil every six years, which I'm okay with. So that usually is more palatable to voters, when they know that you have to come back to them every six years. So the idea would be to start having this conversation. We teed up in the budget document a little bit through the budget process last year. Begin having this conversation for mini-planning session in June of this year. And then you start getting serious about it as we get into the first quarter of 2016. And, because there's a timing for when you have to, I forget when it is. I believe that's August, when you have to have it, what King County, you know, you want to put it on the ballot, for November 2016.
Thank you. Other questions? Mike?
Oh, a quick, so we've been running surpluses in the city. Every quarter or three that you've given us were, it's hard to remember when we didn't have a surplus.
During the recession, we had no surplus.
That was a long time ago. Recession's been over six years.
And it lasted five years for us.
Well, we're sitting on a $750,000 surplus now. Could we kind of, could we bank them, not bank it, but hold on to that money and identify that money for counselors or school needs, which we know that whatever McCleary says, we're not going to have enough money from McCleary. So we might as well start assuming that McCleary's going to be a shortcoming. And right now, we're sitting on a surplus, $750,000 surplus. I kind of look at counselors as a safety net, priority issue. Can we, should we, should we limit that money, hold that money, put it, store it, put it away?
It's a good option.
I'm more a lockbox.
When I come to the council on June 1st, you'll see a list of funding needs. That'll be on that list. There's various funding needs.
When you say funding needs, that's going to be to make YFS right, or for these counselors?
And other funding needs outside of YFS.
Okay, so we're going to have, the 2017 counselors be one of them?
Well, it, hold on. What it'll be is, I'll show you various funding needs citywide, okay? I'll give you a recommendation, something to react to in terms of what to fund first, how to spend that money. And the first thing on that list will be, you know, bridging the deficit in the YFS fund through 16. Get that taken care of first. Then whether you want to go into 17 or not, that'll be on the list and an option for the council. But you have a variety of needs that you need to decide what your priority is. I'll give you something to react to.
So we'll have the 2017, maybe even 2018 counselors there?
Well, I'll show you a projected deficit in 17.
Would you like to borrow him for a moment?
Benson, Mike, here.
Okay, yes.
Okay, so there was, I don't remember exactly, I know that the diversion was identified. There's like, maybe three things that were identified as possible service cuts. I mean, obviously, there's, most people want to increase services. And I'm not saying that the need's not there, but there was only like three items, service areas that were identified as possible cuts. Is anyone going to quantify that, as far as how much savings would be from those minor areas, or?
No.
Is that something that's going to be done?
We will quantify everything. We will price out everything that we have if we had to make service cuts, so we could think about what services would cost, and how would we reduce in those different areas. And you were speaking about in the document itself, people said they didn't refer to us, okay, I was just wondering where you're coming from. So, no, we have the cost for that program, as we have the cost for every program. Diversion is also one of the smaller programs, it's a core term person, so. But I think if we were to get to that point, we would take a look at what every program costs, and then prioritize, and then do our cuts that way.
Just echoing a little bit what Benson said, when we come back for the June planning session, I'd like to have that information, so we can make a decision. Because this report generally talks about the value of the services, which there's no question there is. But we have a management responsibility, and that requires looking at revenues and looking at expenses. And if the two don't match, it's not automatic. The answer isn't automatically, we'll throw some more money at the problem. You know, there's got to be something, part of your responsibility to us has got to be, if we had to cut, this, we could cut 20,000, 50,000, this is what it would look like, so we have, we can understand that. As Benson said, there were things called out in the Burke Report which were actual cuts. And I think it's worth at least quantifying those and explaining those at that planning session.
We can certainly do that, have the, we can have the price tickets free to the services that we do.
Just echoing that, I'd like to, it's confusing because it is a hybrid program. And there's counselors who are school counselors, and then academic counselors, and then there are YFS counselors in the schools. And then, so I'd like to see a listing, or at least the numbers on what kind of counselors are where. Academic, mental health, the drug and alcohol counselor, is that just a middle school position? So I'd like to get the numbers on those. And then, what are standards, recommended ratios of, you know, different kinds of counselors per student?
Okay. I can certainly get you positions and what we have for each one. I think the ratios is a little difficult in our work, because it's not, there are standards for case management, and there are standards for clinical work inside an agency setting. I think the model that we have was developed by us, so it's a little different. But we can talk about some standards like that. Let me get to that.
Well, and I'd be interested in learning about how, I realize that this is kind of a unique model. But it would seem to me that, that, you know, a highly skilled professional mental health therapist might not be the person who always has to be like on the playground, or that some of the, that there could be a tiered approach. Certain level of person, or a certain kind of person could perhaps do classes on bullying, or be the day-to-day person. But then, a more highly trained mental health professional who would really deal with the more significant problems. So I could almost see three tiers of, you know, like a triage, basically.
Okay, Carrie?
Yeah, when we speak about June, Chloe, there's going to be some important decisions before us. And I recognize that we're the funding source as the city. But I don't want to presume that I'm probably the best source in terms of understanding with the prioritization or service cuts, if any, that would need to take place for the well-being of the students and families in our school district. So as far as the recommendations or options that come to us, will there be a process whereby the counselors themselves, or the school board, or where I would deem expert intelligence apply to the recommendations, rather than us try to take that role ourselves?
Let's both of us amplify each other's comments. So you help us in a very unique and special way. You provide elementary counselors to elementary schools that happen to have a mental health certificate to be able to work with students and families. That's very unique. That's not common. You're funding them through a city source, and they're all our children. So that is unique, and that is special. Do we have more need or need at an elementary school with bullying and all of the issues that go into the social-emotional development of a child? Yes, absolutely. And the world is becoming more complex, and as families are challenged, children feel challenged and anxious. So that one counselor is sometimes not even enough. Whether they should have or shouldn't have an MSW is something that I don't feel qualified at this moment to say, but that we absolutely need them. At a high school, we have seven adults, plus a school resource officer that you fund. And we pay a very small amount of the school resource salary, very small. Might even be less than the 10% that Chip is alluding to in what we pay on counselors. That position is so important. So what I would urge you to do as a city is to continue to invest in the children who live in the zip code, and work with us in partnership. Because the services that we're delivering are, in some cases, adequate, in some cases not. Because children are coming with problems and situations that require attention. And so I don't want us to think of a prototypical model that somehow there's this silver bullet out there that tells us magically how many folks we need. We have a great partnership here, and of all the things that you do, I'm so proud of this particular one, that you are willing, as a city, to fund mental health counselors for families and children. And I mentioned that to the city partnership committee, and I think that's something you should be very proud of. It's a longstanding tradition in this community. So I hope we could figure out a way, even with the new state government changes in McCleary, that we find a way to do that.
So I'm looking for an answer to my question, though. If the school board or greater expertise, apologies to fellow council members, than what we have, would be weighing in on what some of the options and recommendations are?
And I think in our case, we'd be asking our superintendent to really be weighing in on that. Can I address that for you, Deb? That's exactly why we gathered this information, because that's what we're trained to do, is to tell you, if you need to cut services, and this is what your community's facing, this is what you look at as far as positions and expertise that you need to have serving your kids. That's why we gather this information, so that we can figure out what those priorities are.
All right. Janet gently nudged me 15 minutes ago, saying it was time to move on. So we're going to get jammed up on the next, yeah, we're going to get jammed up on the next ones, but, so just be aware of that. Next topic is highlights of the Healthy Youth Survey results.
So as Jennifer's getting queued up, I'm going to ask, Kristen, did the council get the hyperlinks that go to the board doc? So you saw the briefing paper, did you get that?
We got the, we got the survey.
You did, you got the survey. Did you see the briefing paper, the background paper?
No.
Okay, so Jennifer, why?
So I've provided the briefing paper for you, as well as an expanded version of the...
Because I think it's worth noting what the briefing paper is revealing, is some good news, and there is some silver ink.
Right. I think I can echo what Cindy said, is that we think of these children as our children. They're the city's children, there's the school district's children. I think we have a unique organization in that we are within the same confines, and other school districts are envious of us, because we can work together in ways that many school districts can't. So what I'm going to do today, you have all the data, but what I'm going to do is highlight about 12 different areas where we've noted positive things and not-so-positive things in relation to our youth. As Cindy said, data tells everything, right? This is a snapshot, you'll have to remember that. But it is looking at various indicators that we believe are telling us about our children, and that I will tell you strongly support the idea that we need to work in partnership around counseling services available to students. So that didn't work. What's going on here? So just, we gave participation rates. The important thing to remember is that we've got over 65% of our kids participating in the survey. You may not think that's great, but when you think about seniors and the lack of desire to participate in these things, to have 63% of them participate, we felt like that was a great number. It was representative, I think is the most important thing. So the first thing that we'll talk about is cigarette smoking. So a couple of years ago, we had, we finally got to the point where we were seeing decreasing cigarette smoking. And so, and that has remained steady. Students don't smoke at this point in time. I mean, some do, but they really don't smoke in what we think of as traditional cigarette smoking. Unfortunately, they have started experimenting with these e-vape, you know, e-cigs and vape pens. And this is a trend that we will watch very carefully. We're significantly concerned about it, because we don't think students understand. I liken it back to the days when snuff came out, and kids thought snuff was no big deal because they weren't smoking a cigarette. And so this is something that we need to be very, very aware of. It has become a discipline issue at the high school and the middle school, but we are aware of it, and we are working to educate our students about the dangers of these kinds of devices. Lifetime alcohol use is pretty constant. Not to say that 63% is really that great, when you look at the seniors. And what you're looking at is a three-year trend. So the blue is two years ago, or excuse me, four years ago. It's, we give the survey every two years. So it is 2010, and then we have 2012, and then 2014. The survey was actually given in the fall of 2014. And then this kind of mustard-yellow color is the state average. So we're comparing ourselves against the state. We like the results of this lifetime alcohol... We like the results of this lifetime alcohol use, that it's at least remaining constant and not getting better. We are worried about the fact, you'll notice that there's an increase in the 12th grade years of current alcohol use. And so both here and then you'll see again with current binge drinking at the 12th grade level and then finally riding with drinking drivers. The survey was given within two weeks of homecoming and so we believe that that has impacted the data. But that also is a data point that says alcohol use continues to be a problem with the homecoming event. So obviously we're watching the trends. It's a little disconcerting down here where we've got eighth graders riding with drinking drivers. That could be their parents. It could be their parents. It doesn't differentiate, right? Speaking of community, speaking of community. Current illegal drug use, there's a little bit of rise there with, it's everything except alcohol, tobacco and marijuana. They separated out marijuana this year. So this is current illegal drug use. Of more concern to us is this current prescription drug use. So it's listed as the percent of students who report using prescription drugs not prescribed to them in the past 30 days. So are they borrowing somebody's ADD medicine? Are they, you know, are they doing those kinds of things? Taking prescription drugs that have been prescribed to the parents and taking those? So this is a new question that's being asked, but something that we're interested in following. Lifetime marijuana use, we expected the marijuana numbers to go up in all cases and they didn't, but they did in some. So lifetime marijuana use remains about constant and we are below the state averages, which is great. Current marijuana use, so 30-day marijuana use was actually, you know, steady, a little bit declined, a little bit up, a little bit down, so it's just generally remaining steady. The perceived risk though is way down and we're not surprised. We believe it's because of legislation that came in and Youth and Family Services and us have had several conversations about worrying about what our students would see in terms of perceived risk of regular use of marijuana. So a low number is not good, right? And then finally, if we look at the perception of neighborhood norms around marijuana, the question is, percent of students who report that adults in their neighborhood think youth, marijuana use, youth marijuana use is very wrong, those have also gone down, you know, very, and we believe that is due to the legislation and then the perceived risk by society around the use of marijuana. Great news are things like, our kids feel safe at school. We're in a safe environment, which is wonderful because when you take about the well-being of children, safety is something, if they're not feeling safe, they're going to have all kinds of other issues. Additionally, as we've talked about anxiety and depression and suicidal thoughts, these are numbers that, around depression, while the numbers are not near as high as the state level, they are concerning. If we have 22% of our seniors say that they're reporting experiencing depressive feeling in the past year, that's of, something of note.
And the N of that would be?
So this is 63% of our seniors, right? So 22% of all seniors would be about 65, 70 kids?
I don't mean to make light of that, but, I mean, doesn't everybody feel depressed at least a little bit over a year? I mean, how can you not, how can you not answer that question in a positive?
100% of the city counts.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I am not a mental health professional. I don't know if Cindy wants to bring forth any conversation around depression.
I mean, when they ask the question, are these the actual questions?
Yeah, that is the question, correct.
I don't know if that tells us anything.
Yeah, is it, are there, is anything more said about it than that?
There are actually about 250 questions that are asked, so I've been through some of them, but not all of them. But we could certainly look and come back with information.
You have a question about considering suicide, which is more definitive.
Right. Yeah, so the next one is contemplation of suicide. Have you seriously considered suicide in the past year? And 12% of our seniors, 14% of our 10th graders, 15% of our 8th graders. And then I did look because I knew there was, because the question got raised about anxiety. So the question is, I'm sorry, so how often over the last two weeks were you bothered by feeling nervous, anxious or on edge? And so we are looking at values between 10% and 16% every day. And then more than half the days adds another eight to 15%. And then several of those days adds another 40%. So we're looking at maybe 60% of our students who believe that over the, over the last two weeks, they felt nervous, anxious or on edge. Three or more days. The final couple of slides are around bullying. Our bullying rates are going down, which I think is great. I think we're following through with complaints, we're teaching kids how to deal better with situations, making them more aware of actions that might be considered bullying so that they can become more productive citizens of their school community. So what's presented to you is about 45 different questions on those slides. This was just 15 of them. And so that's data. And then there is the entire report, which we actually share with Youth and Family Services. And some of that information is used with communities that care, but it allows them to have information about the youth of Mercer Island. So I'm happy to answer questions that I can and we'll move forward.
It looks like we've driven down bullying because we've really focused on it in the last five years. If we really focus on things like competition and pressure, do you think we could drive down some of the anxiety that students feel? We can't drive down the divorce rate, but we can drive down some of the things that ancillary to a high school or middle school situation. And that's the school board's responsibility and the school system's responsibility.
Well, I would venture to say yes. When we focus on something, we get results. Do recall that, is it 83% of our students through their self-report in the, I think it's the asset survey, are scheduled in some after-school activity?
Right.
So when you think about, that's a very big number, which may contribute to feelings of anxiety or depression or not being able to be good enough or get everything accomplished. When you're 16 and 17 or 14, you're still developing and growing and you've got a full load of classes plus all of the other ancillary things.
I need to get up too early.
You get up, go to bed too late, but life happens, you know, in the scheme of things. They're resilient, we're teaching resilience as well. But I don't know if there's a straight line between what a board at a policy level could do, but I think from a school intervention side, we've really, on the bullying piece, we have created programs, specific programs, in-class programs, curriculum, social, emotional, anti-bullying days. We've really made a big effort at that piece and I think we're seeing some good results from that.
I think we're developing a culture, but it takes time.
But I look, you know, how collectively we as a community have worked on the drug and alcohol issue through communities that care and, you know, it's really a stubborn issue. And so, you know, sometimes it's not as easy as programmatically going after something. I wonder, and maybe Cindy knows the answer to this, how much is this affected by a particular cohort? Cindy stepped out.
Okay. Oh, so what do you mean, Janet?
Well, like, you know, a particular, like, say with drug and alcohol use, a particular class that is more.
Part of risky behavior, for example.
Right. So one of the things we do look at at the school level is we look at the cohort, how the cohort has changed over time. So we don't compare eighth graders to eighth graders. We compare their eighth grade score to their 10th grade score to their 12th grade score. And so that's done at the building level to notice areas of need. And also, as you point out, sometimes there's some cohort pieces to that.
But it sort of does raise the question that Janet was alluding to is, so we've got communities, community that care, and we've been at this now for how many years? This must be three years now?
Over five, I think.
And we've never really, I don't know what the metrics are for that program, but if these are the metrics, they don't paint a particularly positive picture. Because you can't see any trends which you could point to and say, something's happening and that's good.
They were looking better till this year.
So, but I, it just, unfortunately Cindy, I guess I have to take a call, but it does force us to, at least, to force the staff and the council and the board to ask the question is, how are we measuring success? And are these supposed to be the measurements of success? And if they are, then it probably means that there's a programmatic, that we at least have to ask the question, the programmatic changes that should be made in communities that care or anything else that we should be looking at. And I don't know the answer to that and I don't know what the other options are. Because remember, we went, we started out with DARE. And DARE became communities that care. And I'm not saying go back to DARE, but there are other, there are alternatives.
Just saying no was before that.
Communities that care is research-based and evidence-based.
But at least in this community, the evidence doesn't, isn't there.
This is one piece of evidence. I know that they collect other evidence.
I think it's important for our staff and working together with the district to really be able to look at these programs, now that you have this data, to look at the programs and say, so how do we justify continuing the way we're doing them or what are the alternatives?
I'm not arguing with you. Yeah, no, I think you're.
What's the funding model for these care versus the care?
Just a second.
Oh, sure.
We provide some of those federal grants.
I think Tracy could come as a member of communities that cares. In the absence, Tracy, if you would go as well.
We're sort of making it up here.
We're really good at that topic. Hi, I'm Tracy Drinkwater and I'm the chairperson of communities that care. I would rather have Cindy here, but in her absence, I'm happy to speak to her. We do use this data to show trends over time and overall, it does show positive information. I think what we had anticipated and what we did see is that because of the legislation to allow marijuana to be legal, although it's not legal for under 21, we did expect there to be a bounce in use because of the perceived level of risk dropping. So one of the things we do with our advertisements about the positive norms campaign, so when you see the things like 98% of parents believe blah, 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 or 88% of students don't use alcohol at this age, those are the things that we get, that data from these surveys. And it's, that's a national group that uses that kind of research-based approach to trying to influence behavior, showing that if you perceive that all the people around you are doing risky behaviors, then you think it's not that risky. And so what we have seen from this data is the use of alcohol dropping and the perceived risks of a lot of things dropping, or increasing rather. So anyway, I think what you're seeing here on this report is what we expected to see because of marijuana being legal. Hope that helps explain it.
I would think that arrests for use of drugs and alcohol would probably be part of this too, and that isn't reflected here. This is self-reporting. I'm sure that we use all kinds of different data, but.
Right, yeah. Community care's post-data from a number of different sources.
I'm just wondering to myself, and not really asking the question, is there any community of similar nature and size than the US that has a better outcome and how do they do it?
And, you know, back to your question, is there anything that we could do as a school system to get at this issue of pressure? And certainly we can find school districts that are like us, that are struggling much more than we are with this very issue, but are there districts that are like us that are having more success and be worth looking at?
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, next on the agenda, Dean Mack, I believe.
He's right in the nick of time.
Nick of time.
He probably walked in about a few minutes.
I saw him, yes, crossed the threshold.
So as Dean makes his way over to the podium, we will, in fact, Jennifer, if you could just help queue up, is everything is all queued?
Everything you've ever wanted to know about mitigation fees versus impact fees.
This is great, you guys put this together. It's really.
Dean has become the master of this topic.
You've saved our staff a lot of, a lot of time.
So what I was sharing with Kristen a few minutes, or actually before the meeting started, so this is a study session of the board at their regular meeting and this is the first draft of the six-year plan that we've named. And we're going to have the board adopt this at a meeting in June, the six-year capital facilities plan. If the council does move in the direction of an impact fee ordinance, we are required by ordinance, or you will require this of us, but beyond that, even in the mitigation fee world, we think it's a really good idea to have a six-year explicit plan that we update on an annual basis. So we also have with us this evening is our land use expert counsel, Denise Tiffarm. So she's in the audience. If any of the members of the council or board have some specific questions that would require a legal interpretation, we've provided an ordinance for you, which we thought we would help you with that as well. And we can have Denise.
Just be helpful if you want to be helpful.
Have a little road out there in case you want to.
So Dean, you have about 35 to 40 minutes, so I thought we might do a recess at about 6:45 to get the board ready for its regular meeting. So I'm just thinking about that chunk of time, about 40 minutes.
So I gave you a lot of information that was compiled with Denise's assistance and I do not intend to, it really gets in the weeds and I hope to keep this conversation up at a higher policy level. So I'm going to start with, so I'm going to start with the PowerPoint that really deals with what are mitigation fees and what are impact fees. And of course, we have two different laws. One is the State Environmental Policy Act that authorizes mitigation fees. And it is in a bad context because it also allows you to charge mitigation fees for streets and roads and lights and those kinds of things. The Growth Management Act authorizes impact fees. So we're just going to start right in there and I'm just listing here the different documents that I did attach for you to review at your leisure. And I am available for questions anytime and you know what my phone number is. So the basic difference when I get to the 30,000-foot level is, what is the difference in money or fees that are going to be collected over time? And currently, we do operate under mitigation fees. We have provided the city with notice that our current fee calculations would be $5,791.40 in multifamily units. And the fee is only on two-plus bedroom units because there has to be a direct nexus between the impact and you usually do not get kids coming from single-family or studio apartments. We've also talked to the city that we do desire to charge mitigation fees on single-family homes. And again, when we're talking about mitigation fees, it only applies when developments get a certain size and we're going to deal with that in just a minute. On the impact fee side of things, the fee for multifamily units would be $4,760. But this would produce a lot more revenue because it's on all units. It isn't just two-plus bedroom. It isn't just two-plus bedroom units. And the way the developer charges it, of course, we're not in charge of, but the fee would be the $4,760. Single-family units, when I just do a strict fee calculation, it would be up about $18,000. And I'll go, I'm going to explain to you in a little bit why I didn't leave it there. And then, and we'll see it here, $18,820. I'll apply the 25% discount, and we'll come back to that.
And Dean, so just to clarify, the single-family quote unit or home is not a remodeled home. It would be a home on an unimproved lot.
An unimproved lot, or it would be a lot that was redeveloped, and it would be house under, let's say it was developed and subplatted, and there were four lots. That first house would be replaced at low charge, but the three additional homes, though, would be a fee for.
Do you have an idea how many potential lots we're talking about?
So a good question would be, how many single-family permits did the city issue to unimproved lots? Would that be another way to think of your question? And I don't know if Scott happens to know that number in his head. Five, five units, or five building permits.
No, that's all right.
Well, I'm sorry, five CEPA, I'll look it up. I've got the information. Five CEPA determinations that would be subject to mitigation fees.
Let me just suggest, because you're drilling down in the fashion that you make.
I used to...
Let's save that because that's part of our conversation about...
But what's really driving the mass of fees on this island would be the multifamily housing units, and the fact that impact fees would be applicable to all units being developed. And so, I mean, you can do the math yourself. If half the units are two-bedroom units plus, and you're getting $5,000 a unit, or, let's say, and that was 100 units, and in total, there are 200 units, and you could charge $4,000 for each unit, the math just starts to drive a much larger revenue base. So under mitigation fees, we do not charge mitigation fees on four housing units or less, and that applies either to multifamily or single-family. And I did make a mistake on another graph later in the presentation, and it doesn't say that. And then, of course, exempt from that are four less replacement units or retirement and elderly care units. Under impact fees, the...
So I'm curious, and maybe, Scott, maybe, you know, the trellis, is trellis considered a single family or is it considered multifamily?
Multi.
It's multifamily?
Under impact fees, the replacement units are exempt. So a single-family rebuild would be exempt, or again, retirement or elderly care units are exempt. There is an advantage as far as the expenditure of funds goes. Under mitigation fees, we have to spend that money within five years of receipt, and the fees must be spent on a project that the students from that development, on a school that the students at that project are going to attend. So if it was in the town center, and they were all attending West Mercer for elementary, any improvement would have to be at West Mercer. If you look at impact fees, you have 10 years...
Here, did I put our...
Yeah.
If those students is the age who then attend Island Drive High School...
That's true.
So we would apply to those...
We would apply to those three schools within the timeframe.
But you're not applying to Lake Ridge.
Correct, yeah.
Well, then, what that question begs, why did you not use the middle school and high school in calculating?
Well, let's come back to that, we'll get there, that question. So, impact fees, you have 10 years to spend the money, and you can spend those revenues on any project in any building throughout the district. So it removes that limitation at the elementary level. I'm not clicking through for some reason. Is that the, yeah, that's the end?
Yeah.
Okay, so now let's come back. I didn't, I didn't complicate the formula for the mitigation fee payment, because if I had have put all the projects in it, I would have used the total square footage of all the projects to calculate the rate, and it wouldn't have been, would have been marginally different. Because if I do one project, what I'm trying to do is figure out the cost of a classroom. So I figure the total cost, in this case, the elementary school, and I divided it by the 77,000 square feet going into the building, that a per-square-foot cost. If I had been using all levels, I would have added up the costs of all those projects, which would have been $92 million or so, and divided it by the square footage of all those different projects. And that would have given me approximately the same answer. So in mitigation fees, we've kind of used this calculation over time, and I just didn't change it when I went into it. When I did the impact fee calculations, I did exactly what you're suggesting. The formula has us add in the projects and add in all the square footage, and, but again, you're not going to get exactly the same answer because the formula is a little bit different.
And we actually have a document that we presented, potentially it was to the board, but the council didn't see it, but we showed method A and method B in answer to Mike's question, and you'll see that the method that generated the most revenue was the one that was used, or it was pretty much a wash, and we can show that to you at a future point, if you'd like.
I'd like to see it, because what I see here is the, so this isn't the numbers that you use for the impact fees, this 38 million?
This one says mitigation. Does it say attachment one?
That's mitigation.
If it says attachment one, that's the mitigation fee.
So Dean, what would be the next area that you'd like to walk us through?
Well, one other question, and then it's talked about, you only use construction costs versus total cost?
In construction costs, if you look at the form that says CEPA mitigation fees, and if you look at the second page, you can see that there's the contract costs with daily construction for the elementary school, there's sales tax, there's design and planning, there's permitting, there's builders' risk and construction management, and the total of that is $38.8 million. So it's all the increments of that project.
Well, this is going to go through to the council.
I didn't include demolition because that wouldn't be an appropriate cost to do this calculation.
Okay, so this is going to come to the council again?
So here's the purpose. We are sharing with you our thinking on how we arrived at a recommendation on mitigation versus impact. So on mitigation, this wouldn't come to the council because the council, right now, we're in a mitigation zone. That's our option. So the council wouldn't have any discussion or authority on this, per se. So we're kind of giving you the big gestalt, and so let Dean kind of walk you through then the CEPA piece, the Six-Year Facilities Plan, the proposed ordinance, and then you'll see pieces of it that are clearly, council, you need to authorize the ordinance. And you may have lots of questions to your staff, for your staff, about things that you're going to drill down once you look at the impact fee method and ordinance.
So I want to turn to the GMA impact fee document, and we'll probably get the link involved in this part. Okay, here we go.
So we're going to now move from CEPA mitigation, Dean, right? We're going to put this aside. We've shown you how we arrived at a fee that we assess as part of CEPA. All right, that was just FYI for council.
And on CEPA mitigation fees, I can see I've got to scroll through this, I can't snap through it. We do the very same thing we do for impact fees, we do the same thing with, that we do for mitigation fees. We do a study to determine how many students are being generated per household in new development. And the last two pages of that document, you see one page is for single-family housing, and with single-family housing, we are seeing .4706 students per household, per new-developed household. And these addresses I obtained from Scott and from the planning department, and it's their record of what has occurred here in the next last five-year period, I believe, that's Scott. That's my memory.
So I didn't, I wasn't comfortable with that. So you've got new homes that were built that you're saying didn't bring any children to the table?
Yes.
Can't we say a house is built and that in, it's going to be a single-family house with what the US Census says, 2.54 people?
No, we cannot, but I'll let, we'll ease that.
So the law that applies to GMA impact fees requires that you show a reasonable relationship between the impact and what you charge to mitigate for that impact. And so the way that it's typically done, and this is, I would say that it's accurate to say that every jurisdiction that charges in school impact fees uses a student generation rate. And the student generation rate uses the actual building permit data from a jurisdiction in order to determine, on average, how many students are being generated from new development. And so instead of using the census data, there's the actual drilling down to what a new home produces. And when you look at some homes not initially producing children, you need to keep in mind that it could be that those are younger families who, their students have not yet reached the school system, because remember, we're matching addresses with student enrollment records. So there could be an infant in the home, there could be a three-year-old, that eventually may reach the school system. It could be that the home has no children yet, but that's a family that's planning to, or it could be it's a home that at some point down the line in the future will generate a child. So I don't know if that specifically answered the question, but it's kind of the background as to why the student generation rate study is used for purposes of determining the per-unit impact on the school system.
It just seems these numbers are so low, with the number of homes you have here.
And they do, and the reason that school districts who charge impact fees update every year is because the numbers do change as the demographics of a community change. And so in some school districts, it's, you'll see more students actually residing in multifamily dwelling units, and then there'll be a swing over a number of years. So it is something that the district does need to monitor very carefully, and I would suggest...
Why, if it's a six-year plan, why even if...
Updated annually.
What's that?
Updated annually.
Right. I mean, why wouldn't you count a bun in the oven instead of...
Well, it's, there's several things. It's because you're looking at, and it's, again, updated annually, you are looking at what is today for the most part, but over the next year, what is the impact on the school district? And so it's, it is absolutely an imprecise formula because it's intended to be, on average, this is what is happening. So it doesn't drill down precisely to what is going on.
So Denise, I'm going to ask, only for time's sake, to get through the big chunks, the big rocks that we need to, we need to push through to get to GMA.
So a real, something that is really important to understand is that under the Griffith Management Act, the law recognizes that somebody that is buying a piece of property on this island, or buying a condo, or a house, is going to be paying taxes from that date forward for the entire time they own that home. So let's say that we're building this elementary school, and that home is developed this year, and they buy that home. They're going to be paying taxes to help pay off the cost of that bond issue for their next 16 years, and say it's a 17-year bond issue. So they're only missing one year. This cost here fairly recovers anything that they impacted our district by on a monetary basis, and the creation of additional students attending the school. It isn't meant for us to have a way to maximize the revenue we could collect, it's a way for us to coordinate the impact and make sure we're getting enough fees to account for that impact. So, and that leads to the next topic. I did apply a discount, and I did that for a reason. Don't run out. And I'm going to go back to the brief. The law provides that the impact fee, and in this case, I was talking about single-family homes, would be more than the cost recorded related to the impact created by the development as I calculated the fee, because it was $18,007. That is, there's no nexus to provide a legal reason to apply that fee. So in order, what districts do, they start applying discounts to get it back to a reasonable basis. You can not apply the discount, but what we're doing as legal entities is taking on risk that our tax system will be challenged in court. And if we are found to have been overly exuberant, and there is no nexus or relationship to the impact, and the fee is just a fee, then we could have to refund everything we've collected over time, and our whole system could be invalidated.
So Dean, what you mean when you were using the word reasonable is showing a relationship back to what a multifamily fee might be?
So, well, yeah, what I did is I went, looked at the multifamily fee, and then I calculated the difference between the generation factor in a multifamily home and the generation factor in a single-family home, to see if it would have driven approximately the same amount. And it was like four times or five times the amount immediately. I know I've got a major problem, especially when I know that right now, a person buying a home or building a home is going to be paying the bonds, principal, and interest for the next 16 years. So what I started to do is say, okay, what we've done is built a system, and we're climbing the proverbial tree, and we're climbing out on a branch that's designed to support 75 pounds, and I weigh 175 pounds, and I'm not 10 feet from the trunk. And I'm asking you, how much risk do we want to take? Well, I'm saying at a zero discount, around 10 feet and 175 pounds, the risk is too high. And the district isn't willing to accept that risk. I mean, the council might be willing to defend that in a court of law, but the district isn't willing to accept that risk. Indeed, I have to certify to this board every year that I'm not, and in writing, that I'm not putting them at risk, and that I am indeed implementing the law and the intent of the law. So I said, okay, at 25%, I'm now about three feet from the trunk, I'm still out on that branch, and I know that to be totally secure, I would be at a 50% discount. I am very lower moderately assured at the 25% level. Even then, I feel there's some significant risk. So I put an example here as a minimum discount of 25% to... So I put an example here as a minimum discount of twenty-five percent to show you how it works.
I'll just add a little bit, just to, to give you all some context about this discount. So the, King County was the first jurisdiction to adopt a school impact fee ordinance in nineteen ninety-two, and when they adopted that ordinance, they, um, and really, the formula that's in the district's capital facilities plan tracks that, what is in that ordinance, and the reason for that is that, after King County adopted, all of the jurisdictions kind of followed King County's formula. Um, but when King County adopted the formula, they incorporated a fifty percent discount, and that discount still stands today. So, King County, for the eleven, roughly eleven school districts that it collects impact fees for, it's all discounted by fifty percent. Um, I, I always advise school districts to include some type of discount, because, for the reasons Dean mentioned, and just to kind of drill down a little bit more, the formula uses averages, which is, which is legally acceptable, um, but you, for example, student generation rates are averages. For purposes of, of calculating the tax credit portion, it uses average assessed value in the jurisdiction, um, in the school district. So it uses these averages, which, which are fine, but you need to keep in mind that there's, there's always going to be somebody who departs from the average in some way, and so, to the extent they challenge, if your discount makes up for that departure, then you are standing on solid legal footing versus being vulnerable. So that's what I would add.
Yeah. So when you look at, just to move our conversation along as we're getting close to the end, what you've included in the GMA impact was a way to arrive at a fee for single-family and for multifamily, and you show the cost of construction, what our costs were, the land acquisition, which was zero, and so on, and you arrive at these numbers at the end. So the council can see how the methodology that we used, what we used to parallel our thinking along with King County, why we arrived at that. I don't think there's any decision-making here, it's all just sharing our thinking with you, and potentially, if the, because this is chock full of a lot of information, were there any questions you had about...
I mean, at the end of the day, I assume you're going to give us a number, and we're going to collect it. I mean, we're, you're not expecting the city to make any calculations at all.
Right.
And I also, there's the, part of this ordinance talks about interlocal agreement that determines relative liabilities. I assume that would include something which says, if someone challenges it, it's the school district's problem to deal with it, we're only acting as a collection agent. I mean, I assume that's, I mean, I assume it's basically what we're doing.
That, that's essentially correct, so, um, for the most part, and of course, your city attorney would, would work on this in, as well, is that, for the most part, interlocal agreements, which are necessary, because the school district doesn't have authority to collect impact fees, it relies on its local jurisdiction. Um, the school district recommends the fee, the city council decides, you know, whether or not to approve, and then the interlocal agreement does have indemnification provisions, which basically says the district holds the city, indemnizing, holds the city harmless for any deficiencies that may be involved in their fee.
Denise, I, I have one more question, which is of more concern to me. I was reading section eight of the ordinance, and it starts, starts out with...
Your ordinance.
No, this is our ordinance, but what you gave us. But it raises a very important issue, because it starts out with, "At the time of application for development activity at the city, the school impact fee shall be imposed." So, and then it, later on, it says, "You actually collect it when you issue the building permit." So what I'm, we've been sort of, in the context of a couple of projects, we've been sort of going under the assumption that we had some time to put an impact fee ordinance in place, as long as we've got it in place before we actually issued building permits. But when I read section eight, it seems to be triggered by the, at the time of application, rather than at the time of issuance. So that, that's critical for us to understand that.
That's, that's a really good point, and I think that the purpose of this ordinance was to start the conversation, and so, and then to work with your city attorney to make sure that it's tightened in the way that you want it to be, whether that's imposed at, and typically, yes, it is imposed when the building permit is issued, so the final point in the development process.
But if, if just hypothetically, building permit's going to be issued November first, and we get the ordinance finally effective October fifteenth, from your understanding of the law, we could do that?
Yes, absolutely.
In the meantime, we are operating under the mitigation fee agreement.
So, just for a second, it's, I think back to Mike's question, and you'll, he'll shoot this down right away, but I just want to ask it, because I, I think it's where he was headed. But, um, the majority of the growth in the district in terms of students isn't coming from these new buildings, it's coming from empty nesters moving on and a family moving in, if I'm not mistaken. There's no opportunity for us to say, woo, you just moved in with kids, you got to pay a new fee because that house went in.
Yeah, and that's, that's absolutely correct, and it's, it's frankly, a deficiency in, in the law, um, and it would be the same with CIPA mitigation, is you can only collect on new development. And the theory is, is that by using, you know, there are, um, new homes built that empty nesters buy and move into, and they don't have children, and so, but they're charged an impact fee. And so the theory is that there's a balance between, you're creating new develop, you're creating new development, you're creating new capacity throughout the system, and so you're charging just for that new capacity, even though there are other things going on in the existing homes. So it's, it's an imperfect system.
That's the disconnect, is that because you're not, new capacity isn't being recognized by doing, by looking back and seeing who's contributing.
Well, it is, the problem is that you've got a lot of capacity that already existed.
No, 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 that is not what I'm talking about. This is, these are new homes, that because a family contributing to the school system, or aren't contributing to the school system, they don't come up on the equation.
So, wait a second, I, I think they...
I think I have something that might help you.
I think they do. Don't they come up in the factor when we yearly look at the number of children being generated from those units? They are.
That's not what this equation shows right here.
Well, we, we... Next year, we'll update that study and get the next year's worth of data, and drop off the first year's data. So, right now, that's five years, next year, we'll get year six and drop year one. So the factor will get revised and updated.
It's probably not going to double in, in from one year to the next?
So...
I mean, we're talking about slight iterations of both upwards and downwards.
Say we are in a period of time, and Mercer Island's been in this period of time in the past, where actually, you have a lot of people moving on island, and they have new kids, but the decline in enrollment is happening in our schools, and we have excess capacity. You would have no right to charge any impact fees on any new homes being built, because you've already built capacity for those new homes. And, you know, part of that is kind of wrapped in this discussion, because it is kind of an average over time.
How far back are you supposed to look? Is it five years?
Well, actually, the only reason I went back, normally, I wouldn't go five years, but I couldn't get a reasonable database with anything less, because we didn't have enough development happening. So I did, I stretched to the maximum, and I ran a full five years.
Dean, uh, just to make it clear, uh, for instance, my neighborhood has had a pile of new homes in the last, last five years, but they've already placed pre-existing homes, they wouldn't be counted, they're ignored, no matter how many kids they have.
That is correct.
Any questions?
Yeah, and Mike, I, if you look at the impact fee calculation, it has the square footage and the cost for the high school, the middle school, and the elementary.
Actually, Denise, normally, these ordinances, I mean, we're also looking at potentially traffic impacts and parks impacts. Are these ordinances usually packaged altogether, or is it a separate ordinance for schools, and separate for city stuff?
Um, they're, they're, they're done both ways. There are some jurisdictions that have kind of rolled everything together, and then made some variation, just based on kind of fee schedule for schools, parks, traffic. Um, there are those that keep them separate, um, but the fundamentals, um, in terms of what's required under the law are all the same. So there are ways that you can, if you, you know, if you want to think of one master impact fee ordinance, um, it can be done all in one, and then just separate sections based upon traffic, school, parks.
Let me tag on to that, because I want to build on Dan's comment. I'd like to urge the council to move on this, given that there's a lot of community interest in this topic, and the fact that we've completed a large body of work to get us to this point. I would urge you to use this work, build upon it, and potentially act on it, and not wait for the completion of the parks and roads in the future.
If, by the way, you have a sample interlocal that you might be able to share with the city, I'm sure that would expedite our efforts as well.
I can do that.
One last weak question, Dean. Um, how do you, how'd you identify these folks? Did you knock on their door, or is it from the...
Oh, well, our transportation mapping system has every household in the city on it, what, how many children they have in our schools, where that kid goes to school, and where their teacher is.
Okay, well, that's...
So I just match Scott's data with our data.
Well, that's what I thought, so, um, we have ten to fifteen, I'm told, we have ten to fifteen percent kids that go to private schools.
They're not, they wouldn't be counted, because they are not enrolled in our schools, they're not impacting our schools.
There is no impact.
There is no impact. So we match, it's the Versitrans is the name of the, of the application, and we map it back to our Skyward where it has student enrollment.
So, Bruce, what is, what is your thinking in terms of when you want to, when would this come up before the council to, because then we'd have to kick it back to the planning commission to start working on it.
Yeah, it's, it's a good question, and, and I guess what we'd be looking for is council direction, is whether, whether we want this to come back to us. Uh, and so the question, I think, the first question is probably that there is a council agenda item to discuss where we're going with this, unless folks want to try and get there today. But I think, so there's a preliminary conversation at the council. Yeah, it's probably logically a planning, a mini-planning session topic, as I think about it, where we direct council to either go do some work on this or not. Uh, any...
That pushes us to be in the queue.
Yeah, I don't think we need to wait.
So, council members, if you want to have this on our calendar sooner than that?
We could, we could, I think, the second meeting in May.
Yeah, there's a lot of interest.
Yeah. I mean, I think it could be a relatively short discussion, whether we want staff to to work, you know, have tee it up before the planning commission, work with the school district, and how to make that happen.
We also, we have an option, if we include this in, um, chapter nineteen, then it would need to go to planning commission, it could be in a different chapter, perhaps, and then not go through the, maybe. We're, we're looking at that possibility, so we, we will come back to council with some options and recommendations.
Maybe we could get that on the second May meeting.
As soon as we're able to, which, yeah.
Okay. So, I just, council members, there's a thumbs up that we want this to come back to us, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And, Scott?
As soon as possible.
Yeah, that's doable.
Yeah, person and I talked about it, so we're, we're okay with that.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, put a thumb up, that's all.
Thank you, Dean.
We're set?
For all the back.
Yeah, that was great.
Yeah, good.
Um, that's it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, well done, folks, we ended up back on schedule, we're actually pretty much right on time. If there's nothing else for the grid of the year-over, we will go ahead and adjourn from this study session, we'll depart and lead you to your ways for the legislative...
So, very interesting. But you may know, I just note that the board then will recess until we convene at seven o'clock.
All right. Thank you.
If we have, if we have comments on the ordinance, do we send that to somebody?
Uh, I...
Just send it to me.
Yeah, that's...